Morning body.
Yes. Thank you. What did I do? Okay, good morning.
If you need to like tell them that I'm in a council meeting by zoom and that I'm about to shut the door. Can't bother until it's over.
Good morning.
Davis, you need to mute this guy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? I do apologize, Ms. Taylor. I was signed on so long, I guess the computer. Did whatever it does. But good morning to everyone. Welcome to the Bessemer City Council Meeting. Seventeen hundred Third Avenue North here in the great city of Bessemer. Today is Tuesday, September the twenty first. Twenty. Please mute your devices. Please mute your devices. The meeting has been called to order. As we go to God and prayer today, you all, we want to. As I always state, pray for this city. This county, state, and of course, this nation. We got many things going on. Right here around us. That we need to pray for. And pray about. Also, while we're praying, ask God to let us do things decently and in order here. In the city of Bessemer. Let us have a word of silent prayer.
Madam President. May I ask along the same lines?
Yes.
That, of course, we pray for those families that are going through moments of bereavement.
Yes, sir, yes.
Our insurance consultant, Mr. Bruce Petway, and of course, his brother Sheriff. Mark Petway. Lost their brother this past Friday. So let's keep that family and other families that are going through moments of bereavement in prayer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counselor Marshall. As we say a word of silent prayer. Let us lift those ministers as well as those pastors that's out in the Barton Laban Park. Praying for this city. A word of silent prayer, please. In the name of the one who does all things well. Amen. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Present.
Counselor Coyer.
Present.
Counselor Crusoe.
Present.
Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Thickpan. Counselor Thickpan.
Present.
Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Donald.
Present.
Seven present, no absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. Item number three, please.
Approval of minutes from September seventh, twenty twenty one. And the special call meeting on September the fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Counselors, you have your. Your minutes before you. For both of the meetings, the regularly call meeting and the special, I mean, sorry, the planning session. The regularly call meeting and the. Special call meeting here. In front of you. Are there any? Questions and or concerns? If not. Need a motion? And a second.
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes. Of September seventh, twenty twenty one, and the special call meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Has been properly moved and we will approve the minutes from September the. The seventh special call meeting, September the fourteenth. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Coyer. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, please.
Committee reports.
Counselors, are there any committee reports? Any committee report? If not, item number five, please.
Presentations, awards, announcements, and recognition.
Counselors, are there any presentations, award announcements, and or recognitions? Mayor Gully, are you on the line?
Madam President, yes. Good morning to you and child council, all. Uh, I have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Madam, Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's not so much as a presentation. I mean, I have a question that, I mean, if you don't mind, that I need to ask of the, um. Um, I get some clarity from the mayor, if you don't mind.
Okay, Counselor. Who is that?
Crusoe.
Counselor Crusoe, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Crusoe.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Gully, good, good morning. If you don't mind, I mean, can you tell me, um, what is the? Procedure as far as in environmental services? When they go out to tag vehicles and going back out to see whether those cars have been moved or that we told them, what, what is, what is that process?
Madam President, um. Counselor Crusoe.
Yes, sir.
When cars are tagged, uh. The residents have seven days to remove the cars before, uh. Uh, the city removes.
Yes, sir. Okay, I mean, my reason for asking that question, um, we had, um, when I was thanking you all on how, um, you had somebody to go out, uh, expeditiously to. Um, tag those vehicles in District Seven around that store, the eighteen wheeler trailers. Um, I went, I passed by there on yesterday and saw that. The, the eighteen wheeler trailers are still there. And the tags have been scratched off of them. So, I mean, if, if, if citizens are able to go and remove tags off of vehicles or, and they not be told. I was just wondering how the system is set up as far as in the accountability to, to still, um, go forth as far as in with the tenant.
Counselor Crusoe, it wouldn't matter if, if a person go out and scratch it off. Um, the police department would have a record of it and they take a picture of the vehicle that they tag.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but an individual can, uh, if they, if, if they have a several cars or for whatever reason, they can ask for an extension.
Okay, and then, and who are they asking the extension? Who, who, do they come before the council for an extension or they just called you for an extension? How is that?
Uh, no, ma'am. They weren't coming for the council. That's, uh, that would be an administrative function. Uh, they will come before the chief of police to ask for it and so a, uh. An extension or myself.
Okay, well, my question, and I'll be done with this. Do, do you, do you recall of an extension being granted for these eighteen wheelers over here in District Seven?
Uh, no, I do not. Uh, but I would have to give it to the police department and so to, uh, see, uh, if an extension was requested. But we have, we have tagged cars all over the city. So, no, ma'am, I wouldn't know. It was just a particular one and so have been, uh, requested.
Yes, sir.
Question will make.
No, no problem. I mean, I'll just, um, await your response on that. When you, when you find out, just let me know. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Counselor Crusoe, you said District Seven. Uh, is there a particular address or?
Yes, um, I said those eighteen wheelers, uh, parked at the grocery store, um, next door to Red Rock, you know, the ones that I've been complaining about on several instances.
Thank you so much. I didn't hear you say that. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other counselor? If not, item number six, please.
Granted extensions. Ms. Hall.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Can I get some paperwork on that?
Ms. Hall, are there any granted extensions?
Yes, ma'am. It's one. Um, the address is seven oh four Avenue H. It was granted an extension. As of yesterday, the property is incomplete.
Seven oh four. Is that three or, or seven, um, Ms. Hall?
The district, uh, is, I believe it's District Seven.
Okay. I didn't remember that, that address. Thank you, um, Ms. Hall. Counselors. Counselor Crusoe.
Yes, ma'am.
She's asking for a granted extension of seven oh four. Is that okay with you?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That's fine.
Counselors, um. I need a motion and a second for seven oh four Avenue H. Granted extension, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I move the resolution.
I'm second.
Properly moved and seconded that we were granting an extension, seven oh four Avenue H. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Coyer. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, please.
Report of cause.
Counselors, you see your report of cause there? Nobody want to curse of grace, dude. I need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I remove, uh, the resident, the list, uh, report of cause, please, please.
Second.
Properly moved in seconds that we will accept this report of cause. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Coyer.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald. Counselor Donald.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, please.
August tenth, twenty twenty one, weed nuisance status report. This is a hearing.
We do, uh, counselors, we do have someone. Someone out in the. Councils. Counselor Marshall.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, that couple that's there, will you ask them to step to the mic for me, please?
Okay, sure. They're already there.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all this morning?
Doing pretty good. Um.
You need to state your name. One moment, one moment. State your name.
I am Reverend, I am Reverend George Woods. This is my wife, Evelyn Woods.
Yes, yes, sir.
We reside at the residence of seven oh eight South Gate Lane.
Yes, sir.
Next door to us is a property, I don't know if it's seven hundred or seven oh two. But approximately two summers ago, someone prepared to put a house there. And was unable to put the house there. But they had dug a foot now. And with them dug and digging the foot now, it began to flood my house as well as the entire street. Um, we had to invest somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve thousand dollars in our basement. To save our house for, because of the mud coming in. But the other problem is now the property is not being maintained. It, it's weedy. And nasty, and it's really making the, the entire neighborhood look. Despicable because it's on the corner of the block. So we, we, you know, I've called about getting it cut. But, I mean, obviously, he's. When he found out he couldn't put the house there, he dug the foot now, he put two loads of gravel over there, and he left it. And we haven't seen anybody over there in a year and a half, two years.
And you said, what was that address?
I don't know if it's seven hundred or seven oh two. But it's on the corner of, uh, South Gate Lane. I'm seven oh eight, so I don't know which address it would be.
Counselor Matthews.
Yes, ma'am. Ready and willing, ready and willing to talk.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. That is, that is correct. Uh, every, everything that was stated, uh. By, uh, Reverend Woods is correct. And good morning. Um. After, just one part left out. After they found out that the, the, the builder. And the property owner, after they found out that they. After they found out that they could not. Do the driveway off of Hickory Road. It's on the corner of Hickory Road. And South Gate. After they found out that they could not. Uh, the dri, the driveway couldn't come off of Hickory Road, which is a busy. Busy, uh, road, um, and, and it would be a, uh. A hazard if, if that had happened. So they were told that the drive had to be on the, uh, off, coming off of South Gate. Well, when they found that out. They just folded up the tent and not, and didn't, uh. Didn't build. At first, they had the silk fencing up what kept down the erosion and the mud from going. Uh, down toward the other resident. But now that that, the project has been, uh. Abandoned. It's an eyesore and it's a, uh. Uh, a issue with drainage because if they had went ahead and built, then we probably wouldn't even be at this, at this junction. But, uh, no, no building was done and, uh, the trees, uh, were cleared. For free because she wanted, the person that was, uh, I guess, that owned the property gave, well, I know. They gave the property to the, uh, company that, uh. They gave the trees to whomever would cut them. And, you know, they didn't charge them anything. They just bought the trees. And so now we have a, uh. As Reverend Woods said, we have a, uh. Eyesore. Uh, bushes. Soon would be trees that's growing and it has never been developed, uh. So, um, that's where we are.
And the, and the, and see, what he said is correct. Because they were going to put the whole house off Hickory Road. And after they found out that they couldn't do it. They did send a survey crew out there. Now the fence that build a fence or whatever it is, it's still up. But the mud and the, the grass and growed up against it so much that it's leaning over. I came home about, uh, spent about a month, month and a half ago. And couldn't even get to the house in my car. Because the water had went, it had rained so bad. That the mud had come up. All the way up to my house, and I'm the second house on the block. And it's just, it's, it's tearing the drainage up. And like I said, I came, I go to work at one o'clock in the morning. I got up one morning, went down the stairs. Because I tried it not to wake my wife and daughter up. Stepped on, in my garage. Stepped on mud and slid all the way up under my truck. I had to get up, change all my work clothes. And then get out of the house. And once I turned the light on, the entire basement was full of mud. Full of mud. And the only way that we could get rid of the mud. And get the water out of our basement. Like I said, we had to pay the sum of twelve thousand dollars. I had to put three pumps in my basement. And that's the only way that I could save my house. Because we were getting that much water and mud from next door.
Thank you, uh, Reverend Woods. Um, Mayor Gully.
Uh, Madam President, um. I, I, I guess we've kind of, uh. Weed nuisance, but, uh, uh, uh. That, that's going to be a developer's, and so, uh, uh, situation to correct. Uh, I, I, I guess I can, uh, either have Ron Gilbert, um, to go, uh, to go out, take a look at the property, see if we can get in touch with the developer. Um, and, and, uh, we, we, and, and if he doesn't do what he needs and stuff to do, maybe we can look at some legal action against that, uh. That, um, uh, developer of that property. Uh, but on private property, I don't, I don't, I don't think the city would have the jurisdiction to go on that private property and so to do that. Uh, but, um, Ron Gil, are you on the phone or, or, uh?
Yes, sir. We're, we're on the, on the line and we'll, Mayor, we'll get us some information and, uh, and get back with you on that and, uh, with Mr. Reverend Woods also.
Reverend Woods, uh, uh, let, yeah, give us an opportunity to, uh, to go out, assess the situation and then, uh. Uh, 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 Ron, find out who that developer is, who the owner of that property is, and, uh, we, we, we can, let's see if we can rectify that problem. And so for, uh, for the Woods.
Yes, sir. He, he should, and I think he, well, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he should have a stormwater permit. And that stormwater permit should give the city of. Uh, the ability to take some action on runoff.
Okay. All right, well, uh. Uh, uh, look into that and get back with me and, uh. Uh, if I can get, uh, 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 the Woods, Reverend Woods and his wife contact information, we'll just see as to what we can do to, uh, to assist them in that.
Thank you, Mayor Gully. And he did say the weeds were out of control. Uh, over there. That is the reason I, I told him to go ahead and he can speak about that. And he does have a letter. I've, I've looked at the letter. He does have a letter about the weed nuisance there, uh. Uh, Reverend Woods, I'll have, um, the council secretary, Ms. Angela. Coleman to come out and get your, your information. And as Mayor stated, they'll get back with you. And thank you so much, and we do apologize.
Thank you.
Yes, President, just, just saying.
Yes, sir.
He would, he would certainly have a private cause of action against the developer. Uh, and the. Mud coming into his house would be a trespass. And so he would have that private cause of action. He might, and I, I mean, I. I would suggest that he talk to legal counsel, but he might be able to recover that twelve thousand dollars if he had spent on his house also.
Reverend Woods, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
So, thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Counselors, you have your weed nuisance status report. I need a motion. And a second, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
On items number eighteen and twenty one, those property owners have requested a two-week extension.
Eighteen and twenty one.
Yes, ma'am.
Look, twenty one. Two weeks.
Um, eighteen is, eighteen is me, Madam Chair. That's, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that, that extension.
And twenty one. Ninth Avenue. No, Counselor Alexander.
I'm fine with the extension.
With that being said, I need a motion. You have two more?
Yes, ma'am. Number fifty seven and number sixty. Those property owners have requested thirty days.
Fifty seven and sixty. Thirty days, fifty.
What number, what number was that?
Fifty seven and sixty.
Fifty seven.
And sixty. One of them is. Is six. And Fourth Avenue Southwest. Is that, um, is that five or one?
What you said, well, you said fifty seven, I thought you said fifty seven and sixty.
Fifty seven and sixty is fifty seven, fourteen hundred, Fourth Avenue South. Since it run down there, is that five or is that one?
Think, well, Fourteenth Street, Fourth Avenue.
That's, that's.
That's, that's what now.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm having to look on my phone, I don't have it on paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, what?
Going to see some southwest and northwest.
Southwest is, is, uh,
Five, I believe, part of it.
Five or six, so, uh.
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
Can somebody look that up right quick?
I'm trying to find it. Uh, Madam Chair, I think Ms., uh, Hall's trying to reach you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hall.
It's off of Fourth, um, Avenue, um, right past Grant Street, near Jerry Drive, like going towards the Y.
Okay. That, that, that's a five, probably.
Yeah, that's five, up there by Jerry Drive is five.
Yeah, that's five.
Okay, you are right with that, Counselor Marshall?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, Counselor, um, Matthews, sixty, you are right with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of swampy down there, so, yeah, I'm good.
Um, Counselors, I need a motion and a second, please.
Madam Chair, like, move the green extensions.
We'll move the green extensions, we need to also move the no actions and the incompletes.
Also the no actions and the incompletes.
Second.
Have been properly moved, that we will accept the weed nuisance status report with the city extensions, the no action be cut, be cut by owners, and incomplete be abated. The no actions and incomplete to be cut, I'm sorry, be cut by owners, be abated. Need a roll call, Miss Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Carter. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Dick Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Donald. Seven ayes, no nays, the motion cares.
Item number nine, please.
Item nine is a discussion on premium pay for employees of the city of Bessemer related to the American Rescue Plan. The following ordinance was requested to be read into the record. An ordinance adopting a premium pay plan for the employees of the city of Bessemer, Alabama. Whereas the city of Bessemer was a recipient of a payment pursuant to Section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A, as a non-entitlement unit of local government consistent with forty-two U S C five-three-zero-six D to respond to the public health emergency caused by COVID nineteen or the economic effects from COVID nineteen. And whereas Section six oh three, C one B of the A R P A provides that a non-entitlement unit of local government may use funds provided under Section six oh three of the A R P A to cover costs incurred by the non-entitlement local unit of government to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers that are performing such essential work by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. And whereas, whereas Section six oh three, G two of the A R P A defines eligible worker to mean those workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential crucial infrastructure sectors and additional sectors as each governor of a state or territory or each tribal government may designate as crucial to protect the health and well-being of the residents of their state, territory, or tribal government. And whereas Section six oh three, G six of the A R P A defines premium pay to mean an amount that is paid to the eligible worker in addition to wages or remuneration the eligible worker otherwise receives for our work performed by the eligible worker during the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And whereas Section six oh three, C one C of the A R P A provides that a non-entitlement unit of local government may use funds provided under Section six oh three of the A R P A to cover costs incurred by the non-entitlement unit of local government for the provisions of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such non- entitlement unit of local government due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency related to revenue collected in the most recent full physical year of the metropolitan city prior to the emergency. And whereas employees of the city of Bessemer provide crucial and essential functions to the operation of the infrastructure of the city and provide services related to public health, safety, childcare, education, sanitation, and transportation. Now therefore be, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bessemer that the mayor is hereby authorized to submit the following allocations out of the payment received by the city of Bessemer under Section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act to cover costs incurred by the city of Bessemer to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers that are performing such essential work by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work and to cover costs incurred by the city of Bessemer for provisions of the government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of the city of Bessemer due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency in a, in an amount not to exceed blank. Number one, eligible full-time employees of the city of Bessemer employed by the city on or before September twentieth, twenty twenty, and in good standing as of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, shall receive a payment of blank. Number two, our eligible permanent part-time employees of the city of Bessemer who worked an average of at least twenty hours each week over the last year and are in good standing on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, shall receive a payment of blank. Adopted this the twenty-first day of September twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms., Ms., um, Ms. Taylor. Um, Counselors, I had, uh, I spoke with Attorney Payton, and I also, uh, spoke with the Alabama League. Now, we had broken it down into so many pieces until we cannot break it down, such as we had it broken down. We can break it down into two. And, um, my suggestion was with that two was the permanent full-time um, and the part-time of people. As we stated on last week, we had five thousand for the full-time. And, um, twenty-five hundred for the part-time. We cannot do, um, probationary and all of that. Um, the library has its own funding. We are not doing, um, the Airport Authority, the I D B. We're dealing with the city, uh, the city of Bessemer and the utilities, uh, employees uh, for the city of Bessemer. So, Counselors, I need to hear you all, uh, first, um, Attorney Payton, did I get that about right, or did I miss something?
Yes, ma'am, you were spot on, there's only, uh, in reviewing this, there's only one change I'm, I'm gonna ask you to look at. In number, item one and two, um, on the last page, it, it states that you needed to be employed owner before September twentieth, two thousand twenty, and in good standing as of September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Um, that requires a year of, one year of service prior to being able to receive this five thousand dollar payment or whatever payment the council decides. But that language, in good standing, I looked at that under the Jefferson County Personnel Board rules. And so, say a person was late for work, you know, and, and had an impending disciplinary action for being late to work, or that could kick them out of that, so I, I think you might want to just change it to be employed by the city owner before September twentieth, two thousand twenty, and employed with the city as of September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. And, and take that language of in good standing out on one and two, because you could, I don't think it would be your intent to have somebody with a minor violation, and I don't know that there are any, but a minor violation that would not receive their payment.
I do agree with that, and, um, so as we are having couns- going through council meeting, um, that is being done.
Yes, ma'am, as you, as you, as you tell me the, uh, council tells me the amounts, uh, we'll do that now. I think also, you know, the estimated number of employees are six hundred and ten. What I would suggest is that we just base off of a number of six hundred and thirty in determining that total amount, because we don't want to have to come back to the council. So whatever amount you, you decide, we'll multiply that by six hundred and thirty, and that would go in that blank, that first blank that you have there, that way we would make sure we'd have all the items covered.
I would say six hundred and twenty, I wouldn't go, um, that one, I would say six thirty. I would say six twenty. Um, so that if there's, if there's some blanks that, that we missed, or some people that we missed, we will have, and you won't have to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have, um, all employees here. Um, Counselors, I need to hear from you, we need. Uh, yes, ma'am, one moment, Counselor Crusoe, we need to fill in blank one and blank two, Counselor Crusoe.
Um, uh, I would like to, uh, offer the, um, um, fifteen hundred for the part-time and, and five thousand for full-time employees.
Any other counselor?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, Counselor Crusoe on that.
Madam Chair. I'm also in agreement with them, it's way of five thousand for full-time employees and fifteen hundred for, uh, part-time. Also, um, you may mention to the I B D Board, the, uh, library, the library employees, and I think you said the Airport Authority. Why would we be, why would we be paying them out of our CARES Act money? And where did, like, where did that verbiage come from?
Uh, Counselor, um, Alexander, we wouldn't be paying them out of our funding. That verbiage came up, uh, when I was having a conversation with, um, Attorney Payton, and, um, it was just a suggestion, and I told him that we wouldn't, uh, look at that suggestion as paying out of, um, the city of Bessemer's funding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Madam Chair. You, you answering me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what? Well, I, I, I didn't hear any objections, was that a motion, uh, Counselor Crusoe? I heard Counselor Marshall say he, he's in agreement with that, and, uh,
I'm in, I'm, I'm.
Let me do it like this.
I, I, I motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, oh, hold on, just one, Counselor Crusoe, let us do it like this, so that the city clerk will get it clearly. A motion and a second. Discussion or roll call. Attorney, Attorney Payton.
Yes, ma'am, just, so what I'm understanding, if we're going off of six twenty, at five thousand.
Six, I'm sorry, six twenty, six twenty.
At, at five thousand would mean a, the, that first block would be filled in at three million one hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So what we're saying, we don't have any part-times at all.
Well, I think what I'm saying is, I think the, I think that number six twenty would include any part-times, I think that, I think that number would be sufficient to, to grab all of them, if not, you want to go to six thirty, we can make the pot three million one fifty, and then that way you would would know for sure, but I think three million one hundred would do.
Uh, Ma- Ma- Madam President, um, it has come to my atten- my attention that we do have some, uh, some, uh, uh, several part-time employees uh, employed in some, by some of the city in, uh, in various areas, so, yes, we do have part-time employees as well.
Okay, as, as Attorney Page said, that three thousand one hundred and six twenty would, um, would take care of those, uh, employees. So, what I'm hearing from this body is, uh, five thousand for the full, um, full-time, and two thou- uh, one thousand five hundred for the part-time, yes, Counselor Crusoe?
I motion that we, um, um, pay fi- five thousand dollars to the, uh, city of Bessemer full-time employees and fifteen hundred to all part-time employees.
Second. Properly moved and second, that we will.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, um, I know you said we were gonna do it for six hun- six hundred and thirty employees, so will they come back with the number of the actual amount and the employees that we pay? So, just saying, we only had to pay six hundred and fifteen employees, will they come back and say, hey, we paid six hundred and fifteen employees, and this is how much money we spent, so this much money is going back into the CARES Act fund?
Okay, we're not using but six twenty, we're not using six thirty, we're using six twenty. And yes, ma'am, a bottom line will be brought back to the council and given to the council as to how much actually was used for this, um, the premium payment for the, for the employees.
Thank you.
And, and, and Madam Chair, along with that, uh, a breakdown on full-time, uh, and part-time, you know, just, and, and then the, the total.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Itemize, itemize it, I guess that's.
So, Madam President, if I could just add one last final thing, is once this ordinance is adopted, and it is not an ordinance of a permanent nature, so you won't have to have unanimous consent to consider it, you can just vote it up or down.
Right.
One, and then the second thing, though, is it's still, since we are within twelve months of an election year, this ordinance will have to be approved by the Personnel Board. Uh, and so what will happen is, once you sign this, and the mayor signs it, and Ms. Taylor signs it, you will ne- need to get this to the Jefferson County Personnel Board as soon as possible, uh, because their agenda will be set, I don't know that, I hope, I haven't checked with them to see when their agenda is, you know, for this first Tuesday in October, but I would say, once you sign it, get it to them, and it will either be considered at the Jefferson County Personnel Board's October meeting or November meeting, so employees would not be able to receive the pay until the Personnel Board does approve this ordinance, so just so the, there won't be any questions about, well, how soon will it be paid? It will be paid upon approval by the Personnel Board.
Thank you, uh, Attorney Payton. Uh, and with that being said, um, are, is there any more discussion? If there's not, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
It, it, it's not discussion, uh, but I would like to commend our employees for the hard work that they've done, not only through the pandemic, but the hard work that they continually do on a, on a, on a regular basis, so, um, but, you know, my hat's off to them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Marshall, and I tell you, um, after the vote, then I'll go, I'll say what I need to say, go ahead, um, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Carter. Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Dick Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion cares.
Thank you so much, I, I, I mean, I, I do want to just piggyback off of Counselor Marshall. Um, they work. Um, they work very hard, and I'm just going to use my mother for an example. On Lakewood Drive, on Mondays, uh, they pick up anywhere from twenty-one to twenty-two bags of trash, because we go to our mother's house on Sunday. He don't say a word, he pick it up, he waves at my mother. If there's anything left in the front of her house, he has his little dustpan and his little room, and he'll sweep it up. I have not gotten his name, but let me say, I truly appreciate, uh, even when there's not but one worker on that garbage truck. I appreciate what you all do for the City of Bessemer. Not just garbage workers, all of our employees. I am so happy when I can ride the city, and I can see that you all are working, even sometime when you're shorthanded. You're working as though you, you're getting paid more than what you are. But that will be rectified as well. Thank you so much for your services here in the City of Bessemer. Item number ten, please.
Madam Chair, I just, Madam Chair, can I just say one more thing?
Yes ma'am.
I just want to commend this body for coming together, um, for these employees, to get this paid to them. I just want to commend everybody on this body for coming together and working together, thank you.
Amen.
You took the words. Enough, enough saying, enough saying.
Thank you so much, thank you all, um, so much. Item number ten, please.
Yes ma'am, and on behalf of the employees of the City of Bessemer, we want to thank the mayor and council for all you have done for us, the employees. We really appreciate this.
You're welcome, y'all.
I just want to say that.
When, when is, when is the barbecue?
Yeah, you all invite us.
Hey, so we, we, we can all eat five dollars worth, you know?
That's right, hey, we gonna do that.
We love y'all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before, before, before Ms. Taylor, uh, say something, this, this, this is nothing pertaining to what we just done. But, uh, when, when we have these meetings, and they be like two hours, uh, let's consider, uh, a little break, uh, for the ones that need to break, okay? That's, 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 I, I'm, I'm serious, you know?
Yes, yes sir, uh, Counselor.
I will take that into consideration, yes sir.
Yeah, I mean, two hours, that's a, that's a, you know, if, if we go a long time, because some people have to, have to, uh, uh, take a break, that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, uh, Counselor Matthews. Um, item number ten, please.
Resolution authorizing the sale of the property located at seventeen oh five forty, twenty-fourth Street North to Lysandra Connors for eight thousand dollars.
Counselors, um, let me say this. Um, I placed this back on hoping that I would be able, or we would be able, and I'm gonna have to stop saying, uh, we would be able to get in to, um, to view this property. I, I did walk around, I did talk to the neighbors, I spoke with the young man who keeps the yard done, uh, on a weekly, sometimes twice a week basis. And I spoke to him, and I asked him, I said, why you come over and cut this yard twice a week? He said, because it makes my property looks good, and I love that, I, I loved hearing that as a neighbor, although, although no one lives there, but he goes across sometimes twice a week and cut that grass. I in turn, um, after knowing that we did not do a resolution to, um, require a lockbox, we only stated that we would get a lockbox. We didn't, um, give mayor a time or anything to put a lockbox on the property. But I did find out we can purchase them from, from Lowe's. I was on the internet, and we can purchase them from Lowe's and put onto the properties that the city has foreclosed on here in Bessemer. I in turn came up, and I asked for a key when I found, when, when I passed that house six or seven times a day, that there was not a lockbox there, and I was told that, um, Mr. Abraham Ward told me that, uh, he was instructed not to, um, not to give us a key. Well, I kind of understood it, and I didn't understand it with, with council being over real properties. But he did, he did say, I can meet you out there. Um, you may have been able to meet me out there at ten o'clock, but with me being in the business that I'm in, I may not have been able to meet you until ten ten, ten fifteen. But I said all that, councilors, to say this, after we have gone, uh, through this process, I will ask, ask us to do a resolution to have lockboxes placed on all foreclosed properties of the city, so that we won't run into this problem again of having to have someone to let us in, or, or having to ask several times to go into the property, to view the properties. Now, I, um, I went and I researched this property, and I went back sometime back, and I found that not only was this property in the owner's name, but a local attorney had placed, uh, his name on the property. Now, with me not being a real estate person, I don't know, but I'm going to get with, uh, Counselor Crusoe and Counselor Dick Pan, so that they can, um, educate me on why and whether or not that was the way it was supposed to be after Bessemer. Um, after Bessemer, um, the fireman that, um, purchased this property and got a loan to, to fix this property, he, um, he fell on hard times, and it was foreclosed on. And that's where we come in at. Now, this property has been sitting there from six to eight years, councilors, this property, we've written this property off. And we foreclosed at sixteen thousand. This young lady has asked, and no, she's not any kin to me, no, I don't know her. No, I just know I pass this property, and I see this property all the time. And with the neighbor keeping the property up, I would think that we would want to go ahead and sell this property to get someone in this property. But, uh, for her to give us half of what we foreclosed on the property, eh, I think that's very admirable of her. Because to look at the outside, and we, and, and the one eyes have come down, and as the rain, it's been raining this week, I know that it's raining on the inside of that house. But, uh, tha- that's not my district either, you all. I just wanted to let you all, uh, know that. Counselors, we have a resolution here for seventeen oh five twenty-fourth Street North. I need to hear from this body.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
You know, uh, where there is so much racket, there must be something out of the kilter. You know, as, uh, Sojourner Truth once said, I, I don't know what it is that's going on concerning, uh, sev- I mean seventeen oh four. I, 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 I just don't get it. You all, well seventeen oh five, I mean, I, I, I don't get it. I mean, so here we are, we've gone from four thousand to now we have a eight thousand dollar offer. And I, I, I think, you know, that, that's a win-win si- situation, of, you know, a fair equitable, you know, redemption for everybody, you, even as far as in relieving the neighbor of the duties, allowing this young lady to put her mom back into her home, you know, to have a, a, a viable, beautiful home in the, i- in, over in, in the district. You know, I mean, i- it's just a win-win for, for everybody, and I, I just, you know, hope that we would do the right thing here to, um, today, con- concerning not only this family, the City of Bessemer, the neighbor, every, everybody in- involved. O- outside of that, I mean, I, I, i- i- it's something, i- it's something wrong somewhere.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Um, Counselor Carter?
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that we will sell this property to Ms. Lysandra Connor for the amount of eight thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Madam President, this is Shan, I guess, I guess the question I have is, my concern right now is, you said the property is not assessed for tax purposes in the name of the city?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, alright.
No sir, I didn't.
Okay.
No sir.
Before you passed the resolution to sell it, I was.
No sir, I didn't say that.
Okay, and just, as a side note, the property was foreclosed on the thirteenth day of January, no, it wasn't, the eleventh day of November, two thousand fifteen. And the reason it was foreclosed on was the owner of the property had passed away. So, he could no longer make payments on the mortgage because he had passed away. I don't think the person had fallen on hard times, I guess, I guess it is a hard time when you pass away, but.
Well, he had, he had gotten sick.
Yes ma'am.
Um, um, and when I say this, I don't mean any harm to any family. Opioids is nothing, nothing to be played with. Um, any other discussion? Ms. Taylor?
Yes ma'am. Counselor Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Carter?
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall? Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Dick Pan? Counselor Dick Pan? Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, uh.
Ma- Madam President?
Yes sir.
Uh, even though we passed this, I would like for us to perhaps at some point in our planning session, talk, uh, a little bit more specific in terms of how we actually handle uh, property that city owns, particularly property that has been foreclosed, you know, where there's some money involved, and we need to try to recover. And maybe talk about, you know, having a process, uh, maybe, you know, calling in an appraiser, or, or, or getting an agent to at least try to put the, um, the property on the market. There's just something that I would like for us to talk about at some point.
I totally, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Totally agree, uh, with that. Uh, at some point in time, we will get together, and I get an ordinance as to how, along with the resolution, as to how we will handle foreclosed properties.
Ma- Ma'am. Counselor Alexander.
Okay, Counselor Alexander.
Madam Chair, I agree with Counselor Marshall, but, I mean, before we can get to that point, we need to know what foreclosed property the city own. We've been asking this since we've been around the table. We didn't even know this was a city-owned property. Counselor Crusoe's been asking this, I know, for almost three years. We didn't know, so we got to get to that point to know what property is the city on, first of all, before we can get to a point of, um, a discussion of how we're gonna plan everything out.
Madam President, this is Shan, uh, when, I'm sorry, when Counsel Alexander, I'd like to respond to that comment.
Okay, are you finished, Counselor Alexander? Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay.
This piece of property was on at least three lists given to the council between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty. So, to say that this property wasn't on list, it's not accurate. It has been on every list that my office has provided to the city.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
That's not true. That, that's not true. Um, a- and you, again, you will, we'll, we'll revisit this at a time when, when we really have the time, but that, that is incorrect about, you know, this house being on, on, on the list, because at one time, we were saying there was like only two properties, and that's when I asked the question, I mean, well, how is it that all these other properties keep appearing? Um, eh, you, and, and, and they aren't on, on the list. So again, we'll, we'll revisit this when we have the time, and again, I do, uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming together again to do what is right, and, and not penalize, uh, eh, an innocent person because of, you know, our lack, uh, your system of lack of accountability on, on our part. And I, 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 again, I concur with Counselor Marshall, that we need to sit down and implement a policy or pro, um, a plan in the event that something does, or not go as planned, you know what I mean? Life is filled with, uh, uncertainties, we, and we don't know, so, you know, not rather than just, you know, having one thing in place, we need to visit the, you know, if, and, 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 and what ifs, and, and had nots. Thanks again, um, counsel, thanks again, Madam Chair.
Thank you all so much. I, I'm loving council meeting today, you all, thank you so much. Item number eleven, Ms. Taylor.
Move, move on, uh, forget my yield, I don't, that's okay.
Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven is a resolution awarding deed for RAA Avenue I Bridge Coating and Rehabilitation Project to International Rigging Group LLC.
Uh, is Mr. Gilbert, Mary, is Mr. Gilbert on the line? Mayor Gully?
Yes, Madam President, um, um, Ron Gilbert, can you speak to that, uh, to this item, please?
Uh, good morning. Hello, this is, this is Daniel, I'll speak on it, good morning, everyone. Hello?
Good morning, Daniel.
Uh, can you hear me?
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
And so, this, on September first, this is the, uh, Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty Rebuild Alabama Act, uh, grant, uh, for the Avenue I Bridge Coating, and on, on September first of this year, we, we received five bid proposals for that, uh, originally, International Rigging Group, uh, was the low bidder at a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, on September seventh, they sent us a letter rescinding their bid, uh, due to a mistake on the bid document, as well as, uh, scheduling issues. Um, so now we have gone to the second lowest qualified bidder, uh, asking the council for approval to award it to Gulf Coast Contracting LLC in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. This is still under our estimated original cost, uh, was at three hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Counselors, are there any questions and or concerns?
I would like to add to, uh, Madam President, that this, this is, uh, this grant, uh, the city will be receiving two hundred and fifty thousand dollar lump sum reimbursement for this project from the state.
Counselors?
Madam, with that, Madam President, go ahead, Counselor Matthews, a year of Counselor Matthews.
Yes sir, Counselor Matthews.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, I was just gonna, uh, offer a motion to, uh, uh, awarding the bid for R double A Avenue I Bridge Coating, uh, and Rehabilitation to the lowest responsible bidder, and the amount that's, uh, stated in the resolution was three sixteen, uh, six forty-two.
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded, that we will, um, authorize Mayor Gully to enter into an engineering agreement with E E F S Company P C for construction, engineering, and inspection services related to.
No ma'am, you're on the wrong one.
No, no.
I'm on the wrong one. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, I'm trying to go so quickly, I'm on the wrong one. For RAA Avenue I Bridge Coating and Rehabilitation Project, I can't wait to see that, to International Rigging, uh, Group LLC in the amount of three, three hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Any discussion? If not, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Carter?
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Dick Pan?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, as I stated, I can't wait to see that, um, that come to fruition. That's the end of District Three and the beginning of District Seven. I'm loving that, item number twelve, please.
Item twelve is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with E E F S and C E N I Services related to R A A Avenue I Bridge Coating and Rehabilitation Project.
Counselors, are there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, I was reading and this is pertaining to E F S. I don't think the city has a contract with E F S. I know they sent me a contract, but it's not signed. It didn't happen under Mayor Gully's, uh, term, but it did happen up under Mayor May. Now, I did look at the information and the signature page is not signed. And then I went back and looked at what HUD sent us and they were totally right. We never went into agreement with them being the city engineers. I've asked Angela to, Ms. Coleman, to provide you that signature page.
Yes, ma'am, she did, uh, provide me this, this, well, as a matter of fact, I have a copy of the entire agreement.
But it's not signed and the federal government said on January the twentieth, twenty, on January the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, during a technical assistance meeting at your office, which is at the City Hall, HUD received an unexpected copy of the engineering agreement between the E F S Company P C and the City of Bessemer dated July twenty-seven, two thousand and four, signed by the engineering firm, but not executed by the city. No procurement documents have been provided as evidence the city engineer was ever procured.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor Gully.
Separate, some issues, uh, whether, uh, uh, Ron Gilbert, uh, as the engineer is working under the same contract and so that was, uh, that is correct, that was passed under the mayance of administration. Uh, and yes, he is still working himself under that contract and he's working himself, uh, under those prices that probably would, would change substantially right now. But you, uh, as you all know, we have discussed this many times before. And at any time that we wanted to sit down and go, and, and, and go over a contract and stuff for, uh, Mr. Gilbert. And so we'll make him available and we'll be open to that. But as far as so, as from the federal government, uh, uh, and HUD, uh, uh, that procurement, uh, only came, uh, and so after, uh, we had, w- 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 we, we, we had initially already done, uh, 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 work and, and Ron had already done work relevant and stuff to, um, to the federal government and stuff in HUD. And, uh, HUD came back after the fact and stuff and said that he had never been, uh, we had not gone through the procurement, uh, uh, process, uh, 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 which, um, uh, uh, that could have been an easy fix if they, if they told us that we needed to procure the city attorney at that particular time and stuff to do and so that particular work. And we were speaking of that particular work, uh, uh, ADA compliant, obviously around, um, uh, the bar leaving par, uh, around, um, the rec center and the sign. But those are two totally different and some issues and one, uh, basically has nothing to do and so with the other.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, you have, yes, yes, go ahead, counsel.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Mayor Gully, but I'm saying the contract that I'm reading, that I'm looking at, at the back, is not signed by the City of Bessemer. The mayor at the time nor the president signed it, only E F S. So does E F S have a contract with the City of Bessemer regardless whether it's procurement through HUD for the ADA compliance or whether it's for this project here? Are they the city engineers? Because this paperwork is not signed.
Madam President, this is Shan. The.
Yes, sir.
This, this resolution is for a contract to engage Ron firm to do C E and I on this project in particular. So when the council passes a resolution for this project, he will be under contract for this project under the terms of this agreement that's attached to this resolution.
But that's not what I asked. I asked, is he? Is E F S?
Counselor.
The city engineer?
Counselor Alexander, is it okay with you if we call a special meeting and discuss?
No, we could do it, we could do it in planning session, Madam President. But I just asked a question and I mean, everybody walking around in circles about what I asked.
I'm not walking around in circles. I'm telling you that this resolution deals with this contract that is before you.
So if he was the, if he was the city engineer, why would we be going into another? Why would we be going into a contract with him to do work on this project if he's already under contract with the City of Bessemer? That's, that's, that, I'm not understanding that.
Okay, because this contract is required by the Alabama Department of Transportation to engage in this project for C E N I, that's why. And he is the city engineer because he's been appointed by the Mayor Gully, who is the appointing authority.
Well, it's not on the contract. The contract was between him and, uh, Mayor May and it's not signed. Now, can I see a contract between him and Mayor Gully? Since you said Mayor Gully is the appointing authority, we can call, I'll call Alabama League and, and see. Because I thought if he was supposed to be a contractor through the City of Bessemer, it comes before the council.
He is the appointing authority, the mayor's the appointing authority for the City of Bessemer. You approved, the council has approved each and every invoice that Ron Gilbert has been paid.
I think we are, I think where we're going wrong. Yes, Counselor Alexander, you are absolutely correct. Um, paperwork is not signed. Uh, it does not, it does not carry the, the president's signature, nor does it carry the, the, the mayor at, at, at disappointed time signature. I think where we're going wrong at, she's asking whether or not he is the engineer for the City of Bessemer and is there a contract with Mayor Gully? Um, we'll place this on planning session, Counselor Alexander, and we will try to get to, um, some type of consensus. Is that okay with you?
This file with me.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander. Counselor, uh, I mean, uh, Ms. Coleman, place that on, uh, planning session, please. Are there any more? Any more questions and/or concerns? If not, I need a motion, a second discussion and a roll call, please.
Madam Chair, I move the resolution.
Has been properly moved and second, that, uh, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with E E F S and C E and I Services related to R A A Avenue One Bridge Coating and Rehabilitation Project. Any discussion? If not, I need a roll call, please.
Counselor Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Carter? Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan? Counselor. Okay, Counselor Matthews? Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Alexander. We place that on planning session for the month of October. Item number thirteen, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute transit service agreement with Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority.
Counselors, you have your resolution concerning the transit authority. Are there any questions and/or concerns? Mayor Gully?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you ask the question again? I stepped away to the rest.
Okay. No, I was just asking that you have something, um, to say about this, um, Bessemer service recommendation for twenty-two.
Are we speaking in reference to item thirteen?
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, uh, nothing, uh, nothing other than the obvious, Madam President. I'm, uh, uh, ob- obviously, I'm, I'm, it's very unfortunate that we lost our seat, as I mentioned before, uh, uh, on the transits of board, uh, um, in the, uh, twenty-twenty census, as you all and stuff know. Um, uh, we, we, we lost our seat by, by four hundred residents to the City of Homewood, so we no longer have a seat on the board at this particular point. Uh, we have had several meetings, um, with the, uh, with the council authority. And we've looked at and so the, uh, the agreement and, uh, uh, you know, we're in agreement with it, but I, I do have some concerns and I voiced those concerns when, uh, when, 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 one, we have the largest ridership and stuff in the system, uh, and two, um, uh, uh, we, we, we pay substantially more, uh, than, um, uh, uh, several of the, uh, uh, other municipalities and so I have some concerns with that. But that's a, I guess, a legislative, uh, 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 a state of Alabama and so issue that we have to, uh, take on another day.
Yes, sir. I, I had some, I had some issues as well and I have spoken to, um, I have spoken to several other, of the representatives about my issues, um, with, uh, just as you said, with us having the largest ridership because there's no way that, um, well, it's, yes, sir, we, that is a state, um, something we need to take up with the state and each counselor need to speak with your, um, with your, um, representative and/or your senator about, um, how met transit. If there's not any more questions and/or concerns.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I move the item.
Need a second. Need a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that we will accept the Bessemer Service Plan Recommendation, um, for the Birmingham Jefferson Transit Authority. Any discussion? If not, uh, Counselor Matthews just stepped away for a break. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Carter? Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Five eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, and sometimes you all, I just park my car and ride the bus sometimes just to see, uh, the route it goes, uh, for the City of Bessemer. I just park my car and just get on the bus. Um, item number fourteen, Ms. Taylor.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute reimbursable agreement with the state for relocation of utility facilities.
Mayor Gully?
Yeah, Madam President, I'm gonna, uh, let, uh, city engineer speak to that and so to, um, uh, uh, obviously, we're trying and so to, uh, uh, move some utilities from Bessemer Utilities and so for a project that we have going on, Ron, I'll yield to you to talk us, speaking of concerning it, so those utility.
Yes, sir, Mayor, uh, and counsel, this is, uh, for our project for the bridge going over Highway one fifty on the walking trail going to the rec center. And the, uh, it's gonna require that the transmission line by, uh, Bessemer Electric be moved over for that project. And this is the, this is the, a detail of the engineering agreement, uh, and the, and the funding for the moving of that.
And, and I'd like to add, I don't know, I, I've spoken with the city attorney Shan. The original paperwork had, had one amount and the ALDOT, uh, said that the engineering, uh, from Stuart Engineering, which is Bessemer Electric's electrical engineer, uh, be added to that, which made the total cost at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Said that was an eligible eighty percent rebur- reimbursement as well and they wanted that added in there. So, so the total for the, uh, electrical engineering and the utilities to relocate is the three thirty-seven, nine sixty-three point thirty-nine, with eighty percent of that being reimbursable through this, through this grant project.
So, Madam President, this is Shan. Uh, we received the new agreement yesterday afternoon and I believe Ellen forwarded that to Angela to get to you. So the, the agreement that is attached to the resolution, it, it's basically the same except for the amount on page two changes from two ninety-one, six fifty-seven oh five to the three thirty-seven, nine sixty-three thirty-nine. And as Daniel said, eighty, eighty percent of that is eligible for, uh, reimbursement.
Counselors, and we're moving it from, where are we moving it from and going to?
Yes, ma'am, we're moving it from the amount that was submitted with the package was two hundred ninety-one thousand, six fifty-seven oh five. The new amount is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine sixty-three thirty-nine. So it's a, what about forty-eight thousand dollar difference? Again, eighty percent of that is reimbursable from the state.
Counselors, any questions and/or concerns?
Madam Chair, I move the item.
Need a second.
Second, second.
It has been properly moved, motioned and second that we will, uh, authorize the mayor to execute a reimbursable agreement of eighty-twenty for the relocation of the utility facilities on private or public right of way for the City of Bessemer.
Um, 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 Madam Chair, I was trying to come off of, um, mute in order to say something. I mean, I know it was a motion and a segment discussion. As far as the reimbursement, what, what are the steps of, um, of rea- of reimbursement? Who will be responsible, um, as far as in ensuring that, um, reimbursement?
Mayor Gully?
Uh, Madam President, um, the engineer will submit and so to the state for reimbursement. Uh, we have administrative process that we do on every project. It's eighty-twenty. Uh, the engineer will submit that, uh, information to the state and we'll get reimbursed there.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're, and I think it would, yeah, I'm gonna vote now.
Any other discussion? If not, need a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Carter? Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Seven eyes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. Item number fifteen, please.
Resolution authorizing payment to E E F S Company P C for June twenty-twenty-one invoices.
Counselors, you have your paperwork in front of you. Any questions and/or concerns? Any questions and/or concern?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm moving all the resolutions for the payment of E F F.
Second, please.
Second.
It probably moved and second, that we authorize the payment to E E F S Company P C for June twenty-twenty-one invoices. Discussion? If not, need a roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander?
Nay.
Counselor Carter? Counselor Crusoe?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Aye.
Counselor Big Pan? Counselor Big Pan? Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Donald?
Aye.
Five eyes? Five eyes, one nay, the motion carries.
Thank you, item number sixteen, please, District One.
Yes, ma'am, I'll keep forwarding everything to the mayor's office.
Thank you, District Two.
Uh, yes, this question is for Mayor Gully. Um, I was riding my district and I seen the sign on Seventh Avenue, I know we discussed. A couple of months ago about Habitat for Humanity and we talked about the property that they own on Eighth Avenue. Now, it's a sign on Seventh Avenue that says, um, I guess they're gonna build some homes with Habitat for Humanity. And the city of Bessemer and another corporation, I guess, the board of, the, the guy that owned Blocks. Do you, are you aware of this? And how is the city gonna be involved with this?
Madam President, um, Counselor Alexander, uh, I do have a, uh, a forthcoming, you know, some meeting. Uh, with Brian Giattina and so from, uh, Blocks. Nothing has been requested of the city and so asked and so of yet, uh. Uh, oftentimes when Habitat comes in and, and partner with someone, uh, to do, uh, uh, to do certain things. It's minimum amount, uh, uh, that's requesting itself from the city. So at this particular time, I know of nothing that the city and so has, uh, has been requesting itself of the city, that would be a totally, uh. A, a private investment.
Okay, because I was gonna say, when I talked to Mr. Giattina, he told me that he was buying the homes and he was gonna. Build back homes with his own money for his employees or any employee in the city of Bessemer. That wanted to reside in Bessemer, he never said anything about going into a contract with Habitat for Humanity or the city of Bessemer. So I was just trying to make it clear that the city of Bessemer was not putting any funds. In this matter.
Madam President, as I requested, uh, I mean, as, as I just aforementioned. Uh, that, um, nothing has been requested and so of the city at this particular time. Uh, but that comment is of the counsel Alexander just made, I would think to be that, that that would be a question for the entire council. Rather than just one council member saying what they will and will not do, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Gully, are you finished, um, anymore?
No, ma'am, I'm not, uh, I wasn't saying just for me. Uh, it said the city of Bessemer on there and we are the city of Bessemer, we are the voting authority for the city of Bessemer. And I was a little concerned because it wasn't brought to the body. That was my concern, it wasn't just me.
Thank you, Counselor, um, Alexander. Um, District Four. District Four. District Five. District Five. District Six.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. I'd like to, uh, I guess, uh, let the council know, uh, the ones, well, let the council know and, and, and the ones that's gonna participate in the, uh. Economic Development, uh, Academy, uh, for the Alabama League. That we were accepted and, uh, we will have notification, uh, coming, uh, shortly, so. Be ready for the interesting, uh, academy that the league will, uh, uh, put on for us. And when they called and told me that we were accepted, I told them, I said, for twenty-five hundred dollars, we better been accepted, so. But anyway, we have been accepted and, uh, I'd like to reemphasize, uh, thank the, uh, thank the council for us coming together. Uh, taking care of our employees and, uh, also getting that off our plate. And, uh, getting a, uh, house off our plate too, so we can, uh, move on to bigger and better things. And then it won't be such a blight in the neighborhoods, uh, when that house get, uh, done. It'll be, uh, livable, so, uh, the community will be proud of it. Uh, on a sad note, uh. Uh, friend, uh, colleague, uh, the president of the Mobile City Council, Levon Manzy. He passed away a couple of days ago, so our hearts and goes out to his family. He was, uh, very involved in the N L C and, and, uh, the Alabama League as well and, um. Uh, a preacher, preacher, preacher pastor too, cause he and I would always. Uh, have some little, little Baptist jokes, so, uh, church jokes, but anyway, uh, I won't get into that, but, uh. Let's continue to pray for him and, uh, his family at least, uh, in his unexpected, uh. Uh, death, um. We did have something on the agenda, uh, concerning the house, uh, on, uh, Twenty-Second Avenue and Long Fourteenth Street. Uh, that asked for an extension. Um, we're gonna try to contact the owners of that property. Uh, in the next couple of weeks and hopefully that on the city right away, right next to the house. It needs to be cut as well, that's on the corner of Long Fourteenth. And Twenty-Second Avenue, outside of the fence, it's an inside of fence, it's the same height. When I said the same height, over knee-high, uh, waist-high somewhere, depending on how tall you are, so, uh. We're gonna ask the residents to do, we need to, uh, do our part as well, so, uh. And some people do come on the outside of the fence, in their defense and, and do their part. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, District Seven.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, have, we have concern over in District Seven, I asked about, um, the possible tree cutting company, uh, uh. Or whoever will be responsible for coming through the city and, uh, and the trimming of the tree stem, do we have an update on that, um, Mayor Gully? Okay, well, while he, uh, you, yeah, okay, I'm ready, go ahead.
Counsel, Counselor Crusoe, um, uh, the director has not gotten back to me and so yet, as soon as, uh, uh, I reach back after him. And so as soon as I get that information, I'll have someone forward it to you.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you, um, as far as for the, um, lighting up of, of the city, I know the last time we spoke in terms of that. We spoke, spoke in terms of the, um, you know, going back and revising the ordinance as far as in the distance or, um. And, and then it was also made mentioned, um, that you all, that the city was preparing to change out lights, which would. You know, possibly help, um, with, with, with the lighting up of, of the city, I would like to know where we are with that. Um, you, so if, uh, I'm asking you, Madam Chair, if you put that on, um, planning session for us to, you know, kind of further discuss, um, the lighting. And, um, the, I guess, the, uh, tree cu- um, cutting contract, uh, if, if, if we have one. I'm also, um, requesting the list as far as in the status on, on the demolition house, I guess, the demolition list. For the houses in, in District Seven, um, you, you, if you can provide us with, with a status of that. I also, um, received a, a call from a citizen who said that she's been trying to get in contact, um, with, with you, Mayor Gully. Also with your assistant and, uh, she hasn't, I've been able to get in contact with you or your assistant or neither has her phone calls been returned. Um, she, she came down to the city hall asking to see you and you were unavailable and your assistant was unavailable. Um, I will forward her information on to you and hopefully you can get in contact with her because she has a, um, a dire situation concerning. Um, of, of, an application she made with Abraham Ward and a request to have something done at our house by the city of Bessemer. And I, I, I will forward her information on to you, thanks, Madam Chair, thanks, um, um, Counselor again for coming together for the good of the city of Bessemer today. Thanks again.
I guess that, um, is District Four on or five? If not, District Three, uh, let me truly thank this body for this morning. Um, how we have come together and truly taken care of the business of the city of Bessemer. I must say I am very proud, I just got a text from one of the council people on the city council of, of Birmingham. Who, um, who's messing with us, saying that we try to mimic them. We're not trying to mimic anyone, we're trying to be the best that Bessemer is, and I know that we can be. District Three, once again, we're, we're asking about that traffic light there on Twenty-Second Street. And Dartmouth Avenue. I think we will continue to ask that because that light needs to be there. Anything else, we will forward on to the, the mayor's office. Again, thank, I need a, um, thank you, counselors, for such a wonderful meeting on today, item number seventeen, please.
Motion to adjourn.
I need that motion, a second and a roll call, please. Has been properly motioned and second that we will adjourn this meeting for Tuesday. Um, September the. Twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
I.
Counselor Carter.
Uh.
Counselor Crusoe.
I.
Counselor Marshall. Counselor Thickpan. Counselor Matthews.
Uh.
Counselor Donald.
I, thank you all, counselors, and have a great day, stay safe.